I'd like to welcome all of you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. It is Monday, July 21st. Please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance.
Levántense con nosotros a decir la juramento de la bandera. Juramos nuestra lealtad a la bandera, a los Estados Unidos y a la República que representa indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Mr. Ross, can you please call the roll?
Pastor Moody, present.
Pastor Moody, present.
President DeMantilla, present.
Mr. LaGranne, yes. Dr. Baker, here. Ms. Lee, present. Mr. Ross, present. Dr. Reynolds, present.
Dr. Reynolds.
And Mr. O'Connor, present.
Mr. O'Connor, present.
And President Faubel.
President Faubel, present.
And we're going with A to count four.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Do you have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Los señores Ross tienen una aprobación de la agenda, una moción. Apoyo.
All in favor?
Todos a favor.
Oppose, same sign?
Todos se aponen.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is celebrations.
El que sigue en la agenda, celebraciones.
I should say Ms. Evans is sitting in for our superintendent, who is taking a little bit of time off.
Señor Evans está supliándole a la superintendenta que está tomando un tiempo.
President Faubel, I'd like to bring Ron Gorman up.
Me gustaría invitar a Ron Gorman adelante.
He will in turn introduce friends of the district from Worldwide Wolverine, who work along with our district personnel and habitat for humanities.
Thank you.
President Faubel, members of the board, Mrs. Evans. Tonight we're here to celebrate the accomplishments of Innovation Central specifically the students from the Academy of Design and Construction. At this time, I'd like to bring Mr. Mark Frost, principal of Innovation Central.
Me gustaría, señor Ross, del Centro de Diseño.
At the conclusion of this recent school year, our students built and remodeled not one but two homes in the Black Hills neighborhood on the southwest side of Grand Rapids. This is phenomenal work that's taking place in Grand Rapids. Es trabajo fenomenal que está trabajando en innovación central y también en la Academia de Diseño y Construcción. Qué experiencia tan maravillosa que ha sido para los estudiantes y los que están construyendo casas para el año que viene. Si tienen tiempo, indéjíguelo porque es fenomenal. Los estudiantes toman sus clases y comen su almuerzo y van directamente al sitio de trabajo. Se ve un autobús amarillo en Black Hills y hay quince o veinte estudiantes que salen con sus herramientas, sus cinturones de herramientas. Y era bastante impresionante que los estudiantes trabajan increíblemente duro todo el tiempo. Durante, tanto como en la clase, un líder en el grupo dijo: "Bueno, todos, hora de irnos." Y se estallaron sus herramientas y regresaron a Innovation Central. Es una clase que contribuye a la comunidad. Y en el barrio de Black Hills. Y hicieron bonito la... Y nos... Gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí, señores. President Faubel, members of the board. Gives me great pleasure to celebrate the Academy for Design and Construction tonight and to celebrate our connection with the community partners for which we are very, very grateful. The Academy for Design and Construction is a center of innovation heading into its sixth year. It's a program in which students learn ninth and tenth grade how to design and construct buildings and homes among several other things. Students are able to apply their knowledge in their eleventh and twelfth grade. Y los estudiantes pueden aplicar su sabiduría hasta el nivel de doce a doce grado a través de una clase de diseño o construcción. Estamos destacando esta noche que ayuden a construir casas en el hábitat para la humanidad y son directivamente para ayudar a la comunidad. Quiero invitar a unas personas que quieren hablar esta noche. La primera persona que quiero presentar es Conny O'Toole. Señor Conny O'Toole, la directora es de hábitat para la humanidad y va a hablar acerca del proceso de las casas de hábitat para la humanidad y por qué es importante involucrar a los estudiantes en la construcción.
Thanks, Mark. Good morning, good afternoon, evening here. Well, yeah, so the students, it's fantastic. They build or rehab houses for habitat families. And we just, we love it, we enjoy it, our families enjoy it themselves. But our habitat families are qualified home buyers. They have a need for housing. Que porque realidad tienen una necesidad de conseguir hogar. Y están disponibles asociarse con nosotros. And so the students really see the benefit of working from beginning to end. It's a wonderful situation. But they're building LEED-certified homes. So their energy star, their LEED certified. And we need the work in the field with new construction trades. So it's really important to train the students.
Es muy importante capacitarles y entrenar a los estudiantes en el campo de construcción. Gracias, señora O'Toole. Ahora quisiera...
Mr. Bellin is coming. He's our construction teacher. He'll be here. But I'd like to introduce now a student. Academy for Design and Construction student Edgar Meneses. Edgar. Edgar is going to relate to you the growth he sees himself and his classmates while going through the process. He went through the process last year. And next year, they're going to build a home from the ground up.
Y hizo ese proceso, la refabricación, y el año que viene van a construir de la tierra para arriba una casa. Quiero decir que la industria de construcción en Innovation Central es impresionante. Creo que todos, cualquier estudiante le gustaría participar especialmente en la construcción. Le quiero presumir, pero se ve que el edificio subirse y cómo se ve antes y cómo se ve después, viendo la transición desde el comienzo al final. En la construcción es impresionante. Es una sensación increíble que hayas construido una cosa que una persona que va a vivir ahí y quiere asegurar que se ve bien y la manera que se ve en el barrio es destacante. Así que lo que aprendí en este programa y cómo sigue es... Lo que yo veo creciendo yo como un estudiante, madurando. Terminando las cosas con cierta horario y sabiendo que tiene que hacer lo correcto porque hay personas que van a vivir ahí, tiene que estar bien. También el maestro, el medio ambiente de tener el trabajo en equipo y llevándose bien con todo el mundo. Yo creo que no hay muchas escuelas que se llevan bien con esto. No lo saben, pero con esta construyendo la casa le da una sensación de que es increíble. Durante el verano he pensado en ir a los barrios para ver a las casas construidas desde el comienzo. Y puedo enseñar ese labor también. Me da la ansia para salir y construir. Me emociono mucho con este año escolar porque con señor Foster vamos haciendo la operación desde abajo, poniendo los marcos en las casas y poniendo las paredes y el techo. Quiero aprender los dos lados de remodelación y desde la tierra para arriba. Cuando salgo de la secundaria puedo entrar en la industria de construcción sabiendo lo que tengo que hacer, sabiendo tener la sabiduría de cómo usar las herramientas debidamente. Así que es la parte impresionante de Innovation Central, de la Academia de Construcción y Diseño. Gracias, Edgar.
You know, I just want to say Edgar's a...
Quiero decir que Edgar, sus padres están aquí también.
And I just want to say Edgar is a representative of all the students in the Academy for Design and Construction. Really dedicated, really love what they're doing. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. David Bellin. Mr. Bellin is a teacher at Innovation Central for the Academy for Design and Construction. And it focuses on construction at the Habitat for Humanity house. Mr. Bellin described the growth of these students during the year as well as their work on the Habitat for Humanity house.
Presenta a los estudiantes durante el año escolar tanto como... Que facilita lo de hábitat para la humanidad. Sinceramente, hay muchos estudiantes que son maravillosos, increíbles. No invento. Si podrían venir a ver, me encantaría que todos ustedes vean la casa y para mirar lo que hacen porque es impresionante. Uno nunca conoce la educación hasta que vaya para allá para ver qué está pasando, que tanto entusiasmados están. No es una clase de matemáticas sentadas en las canchas. Pensando que por qué necesitaría eso. Pero ellos están en el mundo real usando las manos y es impresionante, honestamente impresionante. Quiero decir, los niños, el año, bueno tuvimos el invierno malo. Tuvieron ocho pulgadas de nieve y los niños están trabajando como una locura y no se quejaron. Trabajaron, trabajaron, trabajaron y estaban muy emocionados por estar ahí afuera y era muy impresionante. Así que quiero decir, quiero agradecerles. A veces me doy crédito como buen maestro pero no soy. Digo que tengo buenos estudiantes, es la verdad del asunto. Pero están aprendiendo muchas cosas. Y marcos y bordes. Hasta pintar y techar y poner... Están consiguiendo muchas habilidades. Y revestimientos y pueden ir a Grand Rapids Community College y tomar clases ahí. Tuvimos a los estudiantes ahí que tomaron clases en la... Grand Rapids Community College y están trabajando para las construcciones. Es un buenísimo programa, es impresionante. Yo no diría esto aparte de que yo creo que tengan buenos muchachos ahí y ustedes deberían de venir para verlo porque es impresionante cómo trabajan. Él ha ido para allá, ¿qué hacen? Están trabajando todo el tiempo. Están muy entusiasmados y es emocionante.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellin, but he's been modest. He's a tremendous teacher. Él es un maestro tremendo, tiene una gran organización ahí y le digo, le digo, segundo a los estudiantes. Esto no es una invitación sin intención. Si quieren ver, ven conmigo y vas a ver tres, no vas a ver tres estudiantes parados ahí y no haciendo nada. Yo he ido a los ocho grados afuera, los niños, los muchachos están poniendo la prevestimiento de la casa. Así que es un buen entorno en que trabajar a los estudiantes. How many girls were part of that team?
Cuántos? Y ustedes, una parte del equipo. Comenzamos con tres. Y terminamos con uno, así que... Pero la niña, la muchacha es muy buena. Es María Morales y es muy, muy entusiasmada y tenemos muchas muchachas que el año que viene... Buena pregunta porque quiero alentar que las niñas vengan, los muchachos vengan. El año que viene tenemos más muchachas como proporción. Las dos muchachas que se fueron, fueron a Union. Les encantaba el programa pero decidieron ir a Union. Estaban en algo perdidas en Central. Conmoción o no sé qué. Pero alentamos mucho que las muchachas vengan. Es buenísimo, María es un buen estudiante, buenísima. Y cada muchacha que he tenido anteriormente ha sido increíble. Están listas para trabajar y increíble. La dirección. Bueno, estoy... Siete cuarenta y uno de la calle Merrill. De hecho estamos construyendo una casa nueva el año que viene. Está en una calle más allá. Puedo hablarles después, les doy la dirección, les doy a todos ustedes la dirección porque estamos construyendo una casa nueva. Queda una calle más allá, pero no me acuerdo qué calle pero... Lo va a ser emocionante porque una parte, la cosa es que... En los últimos dos años hicimos remodelación. Y estos niños están en el programa por dos años, están construyendo por dos años. Es muy emocionante para mí que pueden construir una casa este año y remodelar una casa el año que viene. Yo pensaba que fuera una cosa buena a hacer, una alternación porque si pueden construir este año y remodelar el año que sigue sería muy buenísimo. Yo les doy esa dirección porque me encantaría que vengan. No es una ecuación algebraica. The fall, how about the fall? Comienzan en el otoño. En el otoño o la primavera. Espero que tengamos buen invierno este año pero era un invierno duro, duro. Y me agrado mucho, estoy muy agradecido a Wolverine porque donaron todo el equipo y las chamaras, botas, todas esas cosas. Era impresionante porque los niños estaban ahí en tenis, zapatos de tenis. ¿Qué está pasando? ¿Por qué pones tenis? Y dicen, no tenemos otra cosa, todo lo que tenemos. Era muy...
And that leads me to my next introduction. The next person that we have is Ms. Carrie Hill. She is a senior shoe designer for Wolverine Worldwide. She will talk about her company's involvement with the Academy for Design and Construction and their very generous donation.
Y la donación.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is exciting for me on a personal note. I know what it's like to create something and not see a tangible product. So to see these kids actually building shoes, constructing homes and seeing results is exciting at their age. I remember just drawing things all the time on paper and then just waiting to actually see that product made. So this is something I personally would like to keep Wolverine involved with. The collab between the school and Wolverine was just a win-win from the beginning because local talented kids need local brand who's trying to seek youth and the market and it just made a good marriage from the get-go. And I think that to ask these kids to go out and buy a whole new wardrobe in the middle of the school year given the awful winter. It's a lot to ask these kids. It's a lot to ask their parents. And so I can keep voicing as long as I'm part of Wolverine how important this was. As big as Wolverine Worldwide is for global company, actually the largest footwear company of non-athletic shoes in the world, to have it come down to a local community level I think says a lot about the brand. So this is just something that I personally am very proud of. And I think that it's made a very good impact on the kids. Yo creo que ha hecho un buen impacto a los niños. You know, I think that in the future, as long as Gideon Sanders and I are connected through the College of Urban Education and I serve on for Davenport, we'll just keep the communication going.
Vamos a seguir con la comunicación.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. I would now like to bring back Ms. O'Toole just for a few closing remarks.
Para un comentario para cerrarlo.
So I hope you've got a feeling for just the excitement of the program. And it's just helping to provide housing for us and seeing the students by the way their first day on site with their Wolverine gear on was just a beautiful sight. But thank you for listening to us and it's a great partnership. I hope it continues.
You know, once again, we're thankful for the community partners that really are tremendous. It's a great program for these students and the connection to the community. But it was not an ideal environment. If you want me to accompany you on a slight visit this fall or next spring or all of the above, contact me. Thank you very much. O todo, ponse en contacto conmigo.
I want to thank Mr. Meneses for coming out in the summertime. That's great. Next on the agenda is public comment for board agenda items. Do we have any?
Es el comentario público en las puntos de agenda. Entonces, el informe de secretario, señor Ross. La única cosa que tengo es, para mis colegas es... Yo les aconsejo, es Success Fest de GRPS. Yo creo que quiero alentar que los padres celebran los logros de rendimiento de los barrios. Y va a pasar el jueves en el Centro de Gerald Ford y en el gimnasio y las actividades generales. Va a celebrar el distrito. Cierto, de las tres a las siete en Gerald Ford este miércoles que viene. Señor Ross, gracias. El informe de superintendente no tenemos en este momento.
Thank you very much. So next on the agenda are the action items. And the first is the layoff resolution. And I'd like to ask Ms. Pitts.
El descanso, la resolución del descanso. Señor Pitts, quiero invitar a Ms. Savage.
You could just give us a little bit of background on this process.
Sure. Cada año cuando trabajamos juntos con los directores en el personal a fin de presupuesto y vemos las inscripciones de estudiantes tenemos que evaluar. Tenemos, siempre tenemos que tomar en consideración que probablemente perdamos estudiantes año con año. Este año, con la fortuna que hemos tenido, tenemos menos espacios que hemos tenido en el pasado entonces tenemos que, después de pasar todo el proceso de evolución por cada departamento, tenemos gente que tenemos que expedir, que tenemos aquí esta noche. Están en su agenda estos grupos y es mínimo este año. Esperamos que en los próximos meses o dos tengamos más estudiantes en el distrito y podemos llamar a esta gente antes de que empiece el ciclo escolar. Desafortunadamente tenemos que traer esta resolución a ustedes y poder que se apruebe para poder dar de baja a estas personas en este momento. Consistente con las políticas para grupos de no GRA y para personal en los grupos de GRA, tomamos la decisión basado en antigüedad que es el requerimiento para el personal de maestros. Estamos la que tiene que estar una estatua que se dice que la mayoría tiene que estar basada en su desarrollo, en sus evaluaciones. Y luego también vemos en adicionales entrenamientos, entrenamientos especiales y desde luego certificaciones. Algunos de la gente que, pocos, no muchos, no tienen certificación entonces que están en la lista entonces obviamente no pudimos poder darles lugar. Los grupos son como noventa personas en total. Cuarenta. Muy bien. La lista, están en el paquete la lista. No estaba en el paquete ayer, no estaba en el paquete ahorita. Sí, aquí está, sí. Estoy buscando la página sesenta y dos, la página de abajo. Pensé que estaba ahí la vez pasada, la semana pasada. Tengo una pregunta, por favor, dos. No sé quién. Entonces, en lo que se refiere a en agosto del año pasado, el año pasado aprobamos esta lista y luego hicimos una contingencia a una lista en recontratar veinticinco gentes. Asegurarse que tenemos personal adecuado para los alumnos de clases aunque se planea nuevamente una vez que tengamos una mejor idea de los números o hemos discutido esto como es muy tendente todavía. Estoy segura que si es necesario se les llamará de nuevo. Está bien, muy bien. Esa fue mi pregunta también. Preocupado de la misma situación, la misma cosa. Del hecho que recontratar individuos, llamar individuos de regreso. ¿Se hará una vez que continuamos en recibir? Y seguimos recibiendo empleados que voluntariamente renuncian. En el este tenemos personas que si tienen la certificación para este campo, claro que una vez que tengamos estos puestos abiertos inmediatamente se les llama, no esperamos. Dijo que eran noventa, que estamos dando de baja y dijo que cuarenta que son GRA. Algunos de los, se anticipa que algunos que se les llame, algunos ayudantes para los jóvenes se está redifiniendo y rediseñando la posición actual. Entonces, una vez que esto se haga, se anticipa que se traiga de nuevo alguna de estas personas de regreso. No sabemos exactamente todavía cuántos pero se anticipa que se les vuelva a llamar. Entonces, algunos de estos, ¿cuál es el estado por momento de necesitados de GRA? ¿Cómo se sienten ellos? En términos de que, en términos de maestros que probablemente estén en esta lista que se les está dando de baja. Con lo que están preguntando, quiero hacer claro, ¿cuál es la preocupación de GRA acerca de los maestros que están en la lista de que están de baja? ¿Cuál es su preocupación de ellos? No quiero hablar por ellos porque estoy seguro que nadie quiere, les gusta que le den de baja pero seguimos el proceso que se marca y nosotros sentimos todas las posiciones vacantes en las que tenemos gente que está calificada. Y como dije anteriormente, una vez que haya más posiciones y haya gente con cualidades que califique, gente que está lista, alguna gente que no tenga la certificación apropiada, alguna gente que no tiene la certificación apropiada para los puestos que hay por el momento. Entonces, algún otro escenario que se me haya pasado. Yo pienso que, doctor, primero simplemente se puede poner la lista de un par de... Cada año, año con el año pasa esto, muchos de la gente, sé que un par de números están en la lista el año pasado pero fueron empleados este año entonces tenemos unos cuantos, uno o dos gentes en la lista del año pasado que les dimos de baja, que no pudimos traer de regreso este año porque un límite, limitación muy limitada, no tenemos ningún lugar donde ponerlos, donde colocarlos. No sé si esa persona se le ha identificado antes de este año o el año anterior que tienen que tener sus certificaciones para poder tener más oportunidades, para poderles dar trabajo. Y tenemos unos cuantas gentes en la lista que les damos y que tenemos la intención de traer una transmisión nuevamente por desarrollo no efectivo. Tenemos una mezcla de alguna gente. Y tenemos alguien que acabamos y no podemos acomodar su deshabilidad específica. Pero estamos continuando buscando para que podamos encontrar algo una vez que las cosas, una vez que otras posiciones se desarrollen, otras posiciones estén abiertas. En el pasado hubo, mi pregunta es que en el pasado hubo varias razones en las que terminamos dando de baja a la gente. Luego fue poco probable que se trajera. Para septiembre puede poner una lista de las cuales que fueron, antes teníamos muchas gente que se daba, jubilaba a finales de verano. Es probable que esto ocurra, que cause que estas personas que regresen. Yo pienso que porque hemos cambiado este año con su autorización hemos expandido los beneficios seguros para maestros, que nos avisan con anticipación. Hemos recibido muchas resignaciones antes de junio que fue la fecha límite para esto. Pero si tenemos y recibiendo, o se le recibe otra, siguen viniendo resignaciones. Estos tenemos esperanza en diez años tenure aquí, últimos cuatro años. Estoy optimista por que cada año damos de baja y les llevamos al final. Entonces, con las excepciones, algunos de estos es probable que se, algunos de ellos que estén en la lista que es probable que tengan la oportunidad para que regresen, muy bien. Segundamente, esto va a, esta pregunta de inscripciones, esto tiene que ver con las inscripciones si no hay suficientes necesidad para maestros por la razón de clase o otro personal. Pues hagamos presupuesto. Y es probable que haya poco impacto. Los estudiantes, los estudiantes no darán estas bajas porque sería, los maestros que necesiten para personal, claro. La pregunta final es, esto es, con esto en mente hemos podido evitar dar de baja a gente a medio año. Esto se secuestamente, esto no nos gusta, tratamos definitivamente de evitar esto. Me gusta charer esto, muy bien, señor Ross. Pienso que ya con su pregunta... Es correcto que gente que se deja por credenciales, en particular que no cumpla. En términos de la gente que se está de baja, es por el hecho de que... Ayuno se ha distrito. Quiero calificar esto. Puede ser por el hecho de que sus credenciales no había posición para lo que estaban ellos calificados. Puede haber sido también por el hecho de que la nueva ley de tenure se puede, con evaluaciones efectivas o muy efectivas o porque sus calificaciones están bajas. Esto no es un factor ya más. Hemos caído en el país absoluto pero no hemos encontrado todavía esto por el momento correcto. People that are observing. Correct. It's been passed many, many years, to the services that have been done. It's important to clarify, correct. Exactly. I have a question, these positions, eh, were funded by special funds, or didn't have anything to do with this? I'm thinking specifically, expenses for families and support. It could be that, I have to check this, but it could be possible, I have the answer right now, at the moment. Is, eh, at the moment, the reason why they are called down, is because the position has been reconfigured, so I'm not sure if this answers your question, very good. Or the funds, Mr. LaGrande, these numbers, in these calculations, are based on projections in the data descriptions, what number are we working on at the moment? Let me check. It's a good question. Four hundred, seventy-nine, seventy, seventy-nine, four hundred, very good. Any further questions? Any other question? Do I have a motion? I have a motion to...
Adoption of the layoff resolution?
To adopt the resolution to call down personnel, is adopted, is supported? Any further discussion or deliberation regarding the resolution? In what it refers to, the resolution? If there is none, Mr. Ross, can you please call the voter, Pastor Moody? Yes. Reverend Matthias? Yes. Mr. LaGrande, yes. Dr. Baker? Yes. Mr. Slate? Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randall, yes. Mr. O'Connor, yes. President Fall, yes.
The layoff resolution passes at nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, and thank you, Ms. Savage. And, Mr. Evans, Mr. Pence? The next thing on the agenda is the purchasing agenda. For the topic of compensation, I have a movement to approve. It's moved, it's supported for this? It's supported? Any discussion, deliberation? Possibly, if you can explain a couple of the, eh, topics to the public. Mr. Ross, can you, for your favor, come here, to the front, to explain, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ross. The two that are here, the ones that pay more, the ones that pay, one for the road and the other for, eh, if you can explain this? I think that this is for tuition. It's the page seven? Pay for contract, for twenty-four, education special, for services for non-residents, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For public schools, yes. Education special in the county, as you know, is provided by us, and SD, and the VHS schools, so, the programs of the V, that provide for the county, that helps the students and they cover tuition, that's the pay for them, that helps them, one of the cover tuition for students, of course, because we help them for their students. The public understands this? I understand, but it's important that they know, too. Secondly, this material is for GRPS, twenty-four, fifteen, contribution, and, eh, membership for the service, for the service of the department, which is about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-four, forty-two, for, and, eh, yes. Yes, this is also for... Part of our insurance, various insurances are provided through that trust. That's a payment for premiums. Those payments, for those, for those payments, for those policies. Any further questions? You don't have to answer right now, because you probably don't have this information. I would be interested, though, in pursuing the special aid costs, I know that's the total communication program, and it's usually very costly, costly, because they have somebody with them all the time. But I'm interested in the numbers of students that we have, and I know you may not have that off after. I'm interested in the numbers of students that we have, and I know you may not have that off after. But, if you could, please, more forward, please, if you could. Any further questions? If there is none, Mr. Ross, can you please pass the vote? Pastor Moody, yes. Mr. Matthias? Yes. Mr. LaGrande, yes. Dr. Baker, yes. Mr. Slate, yes. Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randall, yes. Mr. O'Connor, yes. President Fall, yes. The purchase agenda passes at nine zero. Thank you, do I have a... We have a question. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. The people consented, it's moved, it's supported? Mr. Ross? Pastor Moody, yes. Reverend Matthias, yes. Mr. LaGrande, yes. Dr. Baker, yes. Ross, yes. Dr. Randall, yes. Mr. O'Connor, yes. President Fall, yes. The people pass, nine with zero. No discussion items? Mr. Ross, do we have a card for public comment? Cards for the public, we don't have any. Superintendent, comments, none? No, the board members' comments, Mr. Slate? None, tonight, on this wonderful evening of heat? Very beautiful, with color, thank you. Mr. Randall, no comments? Mr. LaGrande, no comments? Reverend Matthias? We did have, eh, first, uh, children's first, uh, a, a joint, that was attended by forty pastors in the community, that were interested in, eh, in, eh, with the public, it was very exciting to listen, to give them the information, in what it refers to, the assistance, some of the resources there, so, it was very exciting to see the community involved in our, with the schools and with the parroquias. Mr. Ross? No comment? Dr. Baker? Simply, I enjoyed listening, eh, to the society, it was marvelous. No comment? None for me? Señor, for me, good evening. Can you please finish the session, good night?
My apologies. You could just state your name. My name is Carol Reinstra, and I am on the Restorative Justice Coalition of West Michigan Board. Carol. And I, along with several people, attended some trainings earlier this summer, in June, for restorative practices, and the idea was that we were being trained in order to become practitioners in one of three pilot schools related to, well, it was either, uh, Alger, um, Campus Elementary, or Gerald R. Ford Middle School. And we were being trained to help out with discipline types of issues according to the way it was presented. We are very thankful that we're hearing more about reducing suspensions and expulsions by having a more restorative approach to, to discipline. We wonder, though, if there is an adequate preparation for that in terms of the public as well as faculty and staff, and we would like more specifics about the current situation and encourage the board to oversee what is happening on that front in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Because we stand ready to assist, we are hopeful that, um, we can all work together to help GRPS students succeed and to reduce the number of expulsions and suspensions through more restorative practices, and that's my comment. Thank you very much. Sure, that's just for, just for, um, the minutes, it's helpful. Thank you, sir, for drawing our attention to the... You could give us your name?
My name is Chuck Scala. I, I too am, uh, here to, uh, speak about the issue of suspensions and expulsions. I wrote a letter, I, I got a, a response, thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you for your letter.
I am, I'm a volunteer foster grandparent at my local, uh, neighborhood school. Um, the, the way we work as foster grandparents, we're assigned to a classroom, we're assigned to, um, handful of individual students who we, who we work with, uh, one-on-one. One boy who I worked with this past year, I, I worked with two hours a day, five days a week, one-on-one. We, we get attached, eh, in that kind of, eh, in that kind of a relationship, in that kind of a situation, there's an attachment that, that develops. It breaks our hearts when, when, eh, our kids get suspended and expelled. We, eh, eh, it's like, we're, it's like we're telling, eh, our kids, we don't want you here. Eh, eh, it's like we're pushing them away just when they need us the most, and there's so much that we can do, uh, academically and, and behaviorally to help them learn how to be productive, successful students. Um, I, I, I've been told that the board is sensitive to these concerns, and we, we want to, um, uh, we want to use suspensions and expulsions minimally, but perhaps there's a disconnect between that policy here and what's actually happening out there in the field, because that's definitely not what, what's been happening at, at the school where I volunteer this past year. And, uh, perhaps i-if, uh, you all had, eh, hard data, had the, the numbers, uh, eh, of, of what was happening, and could see how that has been increasing, uh, over time, that might, uh, that might help, uh, eh, help you address the situation. That, that's my concern, I appreciate you staying over to listen to me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scala, thank you.
I'm very impressed with all the collaboration and things that are going on here in Grand Rapids Public Schools. My name is Linda Brower, and I am also on the Restorative Justice Coalition Board, and attended the training. I was very impressed with the numbers of people from our community who are very talented, who want to be of any kind of help they can be in supporting you and your efforts. When I taught, um, it was a while ago, um, but I taught for twelve years in a small district near Benton Harbor, and we never expelled kids, um, and I don't know what kinds of pressures people are under right now, um, but, uh, I know that we can't make communities safer by moving problems to the streets, of course. But, um, Carol Reinstra, who just spoke, and myself also attended a two-day training in Detroit, and her husband, Richard, um, is, well, was really appreciated, and, uh, about restorative justice conferencing, and really want to be of any kind of help we can be to you. But, uh, I'm curious, because even though indirectly restorative justice can sometimes get to the why, I am wondering what else, uh, for future reference, is, is being done. I think I saw five or six schools that are doing positive behavior intervention supports, at least in one of their reports, but, um, I just wonder if we are, um, trying to, uh, when I would observe students at times in classes, I was amazed to find out, you know, when the student didn't show up in the lunchroom, and I'd think, well, where did she go? And then it, eh, we found out later she'd been being bullied, and, and, um, sometimes if, you know, teachers only know what goes on in the classroom, they may not know what their day looks like, or, or, you know, what kinds of disabilities and things might be affecting behavior, and I, I know for a fact, having been a teacher, we don't have eyes in the back of our heads, even though we'd like people to think so. I really appreciate your dedication and all the hard work, and, um, if there's any way we can be of help to you and what you're trying to do, please let us know, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brower. What's do we have here?
Reverend, uh, Albert Hamstra, and Ms. Mindy Hamstra, I believe we have, uh, one more coming forth there.
Albert Hamstra, I'm a minister in the Christian Reform Church, and, um, I'm also the, uh, I'm a member at Coit Community Christian Reform Church, I'm the president of the MICA Center, which is a coalition of forty-four churches and other organizations here in Grand Rapids that, uh, look at social justice issues, and I'm also a member of the Michigan Prophetic Voices, which is a group of, uh, faith leaders in the state. One of the issues that we're looking at, both at my, my church and at the MICA Center, and with the Michigan Prophetic Voices, is how the expulsion of children from schools contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline, especially for young, black, and Hispanic boys. So, this is a, an, an enormous concern that we have, and I'm sure that you share as well, and, uh, we are working in Michigan with different schools in Detroit area, Flint, uh, different parts of the state, to see what we can do to try to get some action from our state legislature, to free up, uh, school systems in our, in our state, so that , uh, schools like, eh, like ours here in Grand Rapids have more freedom in ways in which to respond to, uh, discipline issues besides expulsion of children, especially small children, which we find just, we believe is just tremendously unhelpful for those children. So, thank you for your efforts to do whatever you can to, uh, find a better way to, to deal with the discipline issues in our schools, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Hamstra.
Mindy Hamstra.
Hi, my name, my name is Mindy Hamstra, and I'm a member of Coit Community Church, I'm also married to him, and, um, I'm also a volunteer at my, at, um, Coit Academy, our Arts Academy, and, um, I basically had, this last year, had a very young boy of nine being expelled from school, and, um, even though, yes, it was a very serious issue, a very serious offense, well, uh, a threatened offense, um, just felt like there, there, something else, surely, something else could have been done, um, rather than, rather than send this boy home to, um, not being supervised and possibly being alone, um, so, I've, um, just find that would be tremendously unhelpful for him. So, just want to, um, encourage you, and, um, ask that you do whatever you can, uh, to, um, facilitate, uh, restorative justice, um, in our discipline system in, in the public schools, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the final is Reverend Jerome Burton.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yes, I'm, uh, Jerome Burton, pastor of Coit Community Church, uh, I volunteer, uh, at Coit Community School for over twenty, uh, twenty years, uh, and, uh, I, uh, upon the leaders, I started upon the leadership of Dr. Chan, who really helped me understand what the community, uh, how that work, and how we partner with each other to help children and help families to become better, and, uh, coming along aside each other to strengthening, uh, the families, and, and we do that, we're strengthening, uh, the community. And I am very concerned that, uh, for our children being exposed, uh, expelled from school, um, when they do that, uh, I think that we put the parents at a disposition, because they are not ready to, uh, to, uh, come, come from work, to, uh, to assist, uh, being able to find a babysitter, uh, uh, things of this nature. In fact, uh, many of the s, of, of the parents that I have talked to are not gonna bring, have their children come back in Pacific Coit Community Church, I mean, the school, but in general, uh, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of, 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 uh, restored justice, because I want to see, um, us work with our children to, uh, help them to be able to, be able to articulate and be educated in the school, and I think that, uh, kids being exposed, especially, uh, from, uh, pre, from, uh, kindergarten to the fifth grade, and, and so I saw so many kids, uh, this past year, uh, being exposed, and, because I think that, you know, uh, I don't know if, know if because, uh, the teacher, uh, don't know how to handle them, or what, but I know that exposing our kids, you know, set them up for prison, and especially when you talk about, uh, black and brown kids, and I'm very, that's why, I, you know, I, I really, for over twenty-one years, I have been volunteering, specifically at, uh, Coit Community School, because I want to be, uh, have a picture, uh, showing them that something, uh, different, you know what I'm saying, where a father, where a man, uh, not, you know, not only just as a Christian man, but a man in general, that, 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 uh... that, 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 eh, that works hard and love his family and that they can be productive. And that's why, you know, I, I try to be there and come with a different tactic, where that I'm encouraging these, these kids, you know, that they can be, eh, be someone in life and they can be productive and give back to their, their society. And so I, I'm for restored justice and finding a way, how can we block this from prison, from the cradle to prison. And so I'm very concerned that for, for our young children going to prison, eh, being set up to go to prison when we, eh, is exposing them and they cannot be able to be educated. And so I hope that you all will take that in consideration and really think through, eh, how can we better keep our kids in school? Eh, better, whether we set up an attention hall or whatever, especially for kids from kin, from, eh, first grade to eighth grade, eh, you know. So we need to look into, into how can we better assist our students, our parents, and also our community, thank you.
I wanna apologize again for the inability for, do we have one more?
We got one more here.
Oh, great.
Then that ends it.
Oh, good evening. Very happy to be here. My name is Irmamnchaka and I'm a social worker with Grand Rapids Public Schools. I have been for eighteen years. And within these eighteen years, as itinerant staff were moved. So I've been all the way from birth to three, all the way to high school. And I worked four years with juvenile detention. And what we have heard a few minutes ago is all true, our kids are kicked out. And I have a possible addition to helping make the team stronger. Last week I went to a seminar put on by Scott Larson. His topic was effectively engaging high-risk youth. He's worked with kids that are in different detention places for over twenty years. He's written many books about bringing our kids back in, about strengthening our community and our staff's ability to do that, just to open up their world to bringing in these kids. So I would suggest that the board look into Scott Larson. He's out of Massachusetts, but he spoke at Wedgewood last week. And because my heart is also for these kids that are being kicked out and they're on the streets and then they're killing each other. And I've cried many tears for my kids, I'm gonna cry again, that were at juvenile detention that I got to know and then were killed on the streets. So these are precious kids and there are answers. And working as teams from different communities, we can beat this and bring our kids back in, thank you.
I wanna apologize again for not having the process and procedure. And I wanna follow the agenda as it normally would be, so I wanna give opportunity to superintendent comment.
Oh, thank you.
And board comment.
Well, I wanted to thank everyone who got to speak for coming out and talking about this. This is certainly something that many of you know, is something that's very near and dear to my heart. And I really am going to do everything I can to make sure that, my dream is that we, is that we reduce suspensions and expulsions to zero. That ultimately if a kid needs to be out of school, we can let the courts figure that out, we can let GRPS figure that out, they'll be in lockup. But if they're not in lockup, I don't see any good arguments for not having, for not having the schools to engage with students. So that's my vision, I hope we can get there, thanks for coming.
I have a comment.
Reverend Moody?
Yeah, I, I wanna thank you for coming out and I'm glad we stayed to hear what you all had to say. We also believe in justice. But we also believe that we have a legislature that puts rules in place that sometimes need to be dismantled. And so one thing I think that needs to happen is our senators and our congressmen need to be bombarded by you as well. Cause I believe everybody on this board is concerned about all of the students, especially the zero tolerance. This is not just a Grand Rapids issue, this is a United States issue. So this is all across the country, so somewhere something is going wrong and something is happening. Happening as Reverend Matias said earlier, he and I sat on a board called Children's First Clergy Council. We had received data, I don't know what type of training you've gotten, but there's data out there that explains what is happening and how the system needs to be changed and how culturally some of the people who are in certain places need to be dismantled or, or retrained to think differently from how they view zero tolerance to expulsion, to academics and to basically the absenteeism rate that we have among our children. So somewhere along the line, our children are not happy with what they are seeing in the classroom and therefore they are acting out because their culture in their home might be different as well. Thank you for coming and voicing your opinion.
I just wanna reiterate some of what Pastor Moody said, that this has been a focus of this board and this superintendent. And I appreciate you coming forward.